Jeff Cole. Hello again. And David Isles here. We also have Doug Reston online, so we do have a quorum of folks here, not that it's necessary for a work session, but we do. And Mary Ann's excuse for the evening, she's doing other things. So first up tonight is reviewing our topic list. There's one change to the list that was sent out earlier. We've added item six here, which is just a heads up for two additional contracts, which will be appearing on the consent agenda in our board meeting. But other than that, there's no changes to what was originally presented. So is this okay with folks to proceed with this topic list?
Looks good.
All right, then that's what we'll do, which means first up is our staff presentation of the month. We're gonna hear about Prairie Project from Joey. Hello Joey.
Thanks for having me.
Got about, let's say fifteen or so minutes. We'll let you present for maybe ten or so, and then we'll hold questions and then have discussion questions at the end.
Awesome.
Um, share screen.
Will you push okay and then make that zoom screen large?
Okay, so I'm gonna go over um a project that we did semi recently and then also um. I was actually gonna segue that into maybe a bit of advice from you guys on our different project that I'm working on in the Prairie realm as well. So um, as most of you guys probably know, I'm gonna try to speed through this, so I didn't realize only had ten minutes, but we'll make it.
Well, we'll give you twelve.
So as most of you guys know, the Glacial Outwash Prairie system is very rare in South Georgia sound. We're down to less than 10% of the original span. Uh, ninety percent of that is on JBLM, and so it's kind of protected and being restored actively uh all the time. But um, the rest of it is kind of private land and small little preserves that we have. The systems are maintained millennia or for millennia by native people uh for the resources they provide in terms of plant forage and open hunting grounds. So they're really the main actors on keeping the prairies open historically. So that's another part of the challenge with it disappearing nowadays. Um, another limitation to prairie success is inundation of invasive species, just like in all of our other habitats we're working. But um, it's a little more intensive here because of the fragility of the system. Um, so annual and rhizomatous grasses are really the big problem. Um, and Scotch room coming in a close second. Um, and so in addition to outcompeting native species, um Scotch room also sets up wildfire risk in these areas. Two. And so that is kind of what prompted the projects that I'm going to describe right now. Um, so in twenty twenty-two, there was a big fire out here in this neighborhood called Bordeaux Ranch. Uh, this is the only picture I can find. It's actually from that fire, but um. It uh was really scary for that area because they didn't, they weren't prepared and the fire actually blocked off the only exit. And so all the residents had to sort of flee towards Capital Forest. And that prompted a push for uh more fire safety and fuel management in the area, which um we'll get into more later and ties into my question for you guys. So this is the area uh we were working in, and so my mountains preserve is right there to the north. And there's this neighborhood called Bordeaux Ranch to the south there. And um, one of the landowners um at this parcel here uh is very passionate about his mountain mountains and habitat. And um, there's an ephemeral stream that runs through the mountain mountains right in between all these parcels. And the fire um DNR basically had to make a fire break through that creek and had to top a couple of mounds off too in order to stop the fire. And so he wanted to um restore the flow to that creek towards original path. And it's not um, not the most uh big habitat benefit for this project because it's an ephemeral stream. It dries up by May. Um, so uh anyway, he really wanted that to be restored back to normal and uh we wanted to plant more prairie plants out there. So the perfect fit to do uh plant restoration as well as moving the sediment out of the stream. And so this is Katrina, don't worry too much about the details of this. So this is Katrina's as built that she designed for this project. Um, we had to get a lot of permits for this because we're working in the stream. And so there was, it was heavy, heavy permitting, but um up here. Or it doesn't work, but up in the right corner is kind of, you can see where the sediment got pushed into the stream and messed up the flow. Um, and then uh, so yeah, that's the main part of the project and we followed it up with the planting. Um, another cool thing that Katrina did was using all this wild light, light art imagery and other um consulting with other engineers from Mason Conservation District. She redesigned the mounds to be perfectly what they were before. Um, so it was pretty cool, like multiple engineers were working on this and they worked with the excavator contractor guy to really try to build it to the steps it was before the fire. Um, I don't really understand how they did that with you, but but this is some of the mapping they were using. Um, and so this was beforehand. This doesn't look like a lot because it's a pretty degraded prairie, but um that's uh the fire break right there. And then afterwards, this is what it looks like before we got uh any stream flow in there. So a little bit of erosion fabric and it's all straightened out and back to its normal path. And then we got some good prairie plants established too. Um, again, not super showy, but this is, this is pretty solid for, for a prairie in South Georgia sound. Um, and. Do some more. We come stuck. But that's what happened in the world. Um, so I also wanted to just touch on a couple of like lessons learned that I learned through the project. Actually, I guess that's not super important. But they all, I'll just go over it really quickly. What? Um, so we did this as a dip project where, because the landowner really wanted to. Or no, sorry, we did it as a caution project because the landowner wanted to hire his own people and have a lot more like hands-on involvement with the project. And we decided to go with that because um it just seemed like a good fit. Um, but when I was working with him throughout the process, it was kind of difficult because he didn't really listen to a lot of the advice we were saying. And um, the timing that was really important for him to do certain steps that he didn't do all of them. And so like, the project could have turned out a lot better in terms of plant success if um, I think if I did the right level of handholding. Um, but it felt like I was kind of heavy-handed in that as during it. So I don't know, it's kind of hard to strike that balance, but um definitely learned the dynamics of if we had gone the dip direction to where we would have been kind of controlling things more, it might have been more successful in terms of the planting. Um, but it still was a success and he met all the requirements of the VMPs and all the goals were met, so. And she had this working. Obviously, it is working. Okay, so. This property here is kind of what I wanted to talk about next. Um. Sorry. So um, this is directly south of the mountain mountains preserve, right? So this department of natural resources is the preserve. This is a fifty acre property that um is basically unmaintained and just completely full of old, old growth Scotch room right now. And um, they used to have Prairie Appreciation Day there. Like this was, this picture I showed you at the beginning was actually uh in two thousand and two. Um, when they would have, it was at Tristine because the landowner let uh restoration agencies come on and maintain it. But recently, or soon after this, uh got sold to a different person who was not so restoration-minded nor uh community-minded because uh during this time too, that whole neighborhood can access this for walking and hiking. It's pretty big. It's fifty acres. Um, and the next landowner wanted to build an airstrip on it and was denied by the county. And um, the county, it's actually a, it's called, it's, it's under a critical area status, so it's, it's prohibited to be developed anywhere. Um, but, and so if you learned that and basically just closed the gates and didn't do anything, and that's why we're in the situation that it is now, where it looks like this. Um. But now there's new landowners. And so we've been talking to these new landowners about um how they can manage this essentially, and they're really into habitat and there's what, and they're also really into the wildfire. Um. You know, decreasing the risk of wildfire, especially for the whole neighborhood. This is like really the last holding of large scale room like this in the area. So um, we were trying to, they're, they're interested in something, so they want to, they want to work on it. And so I was trying to strategize, what's the best way to do that? And so I've reached out to a ton of partners and we've been talking in the background about it. Most of them are very excited about this because of the potential to really rehabilitate fifty acres of prairie. When you walk out there, you can see species that are, you know, very signature to a healthy prairie. And if you release it, like can get rid of all this broom, it's really gonna come back and probably look more like this. Um, but so I pitched these three kind of avenues to the landowners and one was acquisition. Um, because DNR actually said we'd buy this tomorrow if, if they'd let us. Um, and just basically make it a continuation of the mountain mountains preserve. Um, and also this is Sentinel Lands program, repi program is also saying the same thing, like we'd buy this tomorrow if they'd let us. And so I was really hoping it would have been the DNR outcome. So I think that would be pretty cool to have just a big extension of my mountains and have it be preserved and managed. Um, but the landowner decided um, they're worried that they'd lose the public access piece if they went that, those routes. And then they want to sort of retain ownership at least until their, their deaths, they said. Um, and so they're, they, they're preferring a conservation easement instead. And oh, sorry, the third route I presented was just restoration, like getting eco-studies and other interested organizations out there to just manage the broom. And so no matter what, that's happening for sure. But um, them wanting to do an easement um is kind of the next thing we want to explore because in the background of all this restoration can begin now, um, we need to find the right fit for that. And so that's, I don't know, I started looking for an answer, but if anything pops out to you guys and you think of things in the next couple of weeks or something, please reach out because I, I'm very inexperienced in the easement world. And I don't know about the dynamics of each organization yet. I'm gonna start researching that soon and have a few meetings set up uh with uh land trust folks, but um very initial talks and yeah, it's a lot of learning to come, but that's pretty much what we've been up to in the prairie world.
Thank you. Um, let's see if we have questions or comments. I'm gonna start online. Doug, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Are there any ESA concerns? And if there are, maybe the Fish and Wildlife Service could get involved.
There aren't really concerns. Um, it is uh like preferred soil, but it's not inhabited by the gopher. But part of what the other restoration organizations um are talking about is eventually having this be suitable for Taylor's checker spot release. So it's actually would be like really beneficial for all the, for the couple little prairie uh critters that we have that are endangered.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they would like that better than Scotch bro.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, no questions.
Jennifer?
No questions. Good work though.
Yeah, I guess I have one comment uh on the idea of an easement. My understanding of easements is they are used to protect land that it's risk of development. And yeah. And that land, you already said, can't be developed. So it doesn't seem to make sense to me that you would bother going through an easement process on that.
Yeah, I was thinking the same, and I don't know if it's because they want to, when I talk to.
It may be a tax issue for that.
Yeah, it's a very low valued property. It's great. Only about fifty acres. If you look on the geodata thing, it's eighty-five grand is what it's worth.
And what's, do you know what the zoning is on it?
Um. I don't.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only thing I could think of from a landowner perspective is if you got an easement, you could reduce tax liability. But if it's such low value, not developable land anyway, I wouldn't think that's a huge benefit to the property owner.
Yeah.
It sounds like there's also an interest in um a stewardship legacy on this parcel to make sure that all this investment in conservation enhancement doesn't go by the wayside when these folks are leaving. And so the nexus with entities like eco-studies or others that are doing this enhancement and putting easements on there so they can do further management of the properties, I think, is maybe of interest here. Or even like JBLM is doing their conservation crediting piece too, where they overlay some restriction on that with some expectation that there's gonna be enhancement in the future. And it seems like maybe that's more of the flavor that these landowners are looking for than to outright prevent development.
Yes, this looks like a fun thing for me to look at. So if you, if you can send me a map.
Yeah, I can definitely.
I, I can take a look at it and I, and maybe give you some more ideas about.
Yeah.
Where to go. Easements are a very flexible mechanism.
Yeah.
And you could definitely do more than tie up future development within easement. But you'd need to get an organization willing to pay more for the easement or invest in, in the project after the easement and that's not necessarily in their comfort zone for a lot of their. Yeah, and there's ongoing monitoring as well. But I guess the bigger question is, if there's a fixed pot of money to purchase easements in this region, is that the best use of it? Because it's not at risk for development versus other property that might be of higher value or higher risk of development. So hopefully, that's just something to think about.
Yeah, though our role in this space too is to help the landowner um identify what their goals are and link them up to the entities that provide those types of solutions. So trying to determine what the easement structure looks like isn't our role in this process. Um, but connecting them with the entities that are doing the enhancement or might be interested in this property is. And so we play that function with a lot of our land trusts in this landscape, particularly through the center landscape partnerships. So we're more of a matchmaker.
Right, but that's, that's the, that's the key thing is you want to match them with an entity that is comfortable with the kind of easement that would actually work.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, and that's not most of them.
And they, they do that betting in this partnership.
And uh, and there might be other state entities to talk to depending on transportation on the air and not going to play.
It almost seems like it's something um, if what they're really interested in is just making sure it doesn't turn into this again and that it's like maintained as prairie. It's almost something around like an endowment or something, right? That you are funding ongoing, you know, work and maintenance and restoration for this property.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that because that was actually what I've been talking to Dan Calvert in the Sentinel Lands and Repi world. And he's talking about it would, this could be like a pilot kind of project where there's multiple entities, but they did mention a stewardship endowment.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And like that, that sounds.
Yeah.
And that's a mechanism and a function that a, a lot of our land trusts use to do the stewardship in perpetuity moving forward. So we'll meet too and talk and you know, demystify that landscape.
It is pretty mystical to me right now, but yeah.
I look forward to.
Well, thank you for, for sharing that with us. I used to go to the Prairie Appreciation Days and I remember it looking like the other picture. So this is kind of sad. I'd like it to look like the other picture again.
Did you go to it on this parcel? Because it moved. It used to be on this parcel.
I did. We took, we took our son there when he was young. We used to go to that every spring. So I remember it looking kind of like that other picture. So yeah.
That's awesome.
Anyway, thank you, Joey. Appreciate it. And you're welcome to hang out. You're also welcome to go elsewhere and move on with your day.
Right.
Thank you, Joey.
Okay. All right, uh, with that, next up here is um a little debrief on the WACD area meeting. Those of you that were there, Sarah and Doug.
Or Doug, do you want to start and I'll add anything else?
You know, I wish this mute button was automatic. Come on. Uh, but there's been two so far, uh, one in the Northwest Renton. And uh, there were a couple of resolutions from Skagit. Two went through and they were dealing with CRP and then two that didn't go through. I thought it was a well-attended meeting. It went, went fine. Uh, I don't particularly like going to Renton, but that's the way it was. The one in Southwest was in a place called Rosberg, west of Cathlama, which is west of Longview. And there was uh one there, one resolution that had to do with uh aquaculture. And the basic lesson was uh the district should have talked to, to more people to flesh out what they were trying to do. I think there was support, but it needs some work. But I thought they were both good. Uh, I will point out that Sarah was the only one that gave an update in the Southwest region. Good job, Sarah.
I think Sean snuck in there for callouts, but thank you, Doug.
Do you want to add anything to his reports here?
Um, no, I think they were both great meetings. Um, I would say that the Northwest area meeting was actually really not well attended by supervisors. There were only six voting members there, which was really concerning considering that region of the state drives a lot of policy for the whole state. Um, and so that's just a topic about board member engagement and succession that WACD and others are really focusing on and trying to figure out how to make Conservation District business and spending all of your time volunteering to make this whole system work, how to make that engaging and attractive and suitable for future generations of supervisors. So that was just an observation to share, but um otherwise, uh, yeah, I think the meetings are great. Heather was there as well.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, moving on then, next item here is um our strategic plan, draft strategic plan.
I will jump right in.
Yes.
And so you guys uh maybe had a chance to start delving into this in your email. I sent this out to you guys this week. And pulling that up on the screen and not this contract. And I'm excited to share this with you and I'm really looking forward to your feedback today because this is really TCD's first strategic plan. We've had long-range plans in the past that are cumulative, five-year annual plans uh that have ninety-seven hyper-specific metrics um and are really detailed, but it have a lot of uh maybe visionary components, but not a lot of longer-term strategy. And so the plan that you saw um is an attempt to sort of bridge that and let, sorry, let me share my screen here. Sophia, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop yours. Um. And so I just want to walk through briefly some of the components of that um and mostly spend time where you would like to spend time having some conversation and hear your feedback. What I'm looking for tonight is um, yes, this is the direction we want to go or no, it's not. And here's the changes we want to make uh because after tonight, we're going to be doing cleanup and revising. We're gonna add your feedback to this. We're gonna make those changes. We're gonna add some of those other components I told you via email that we're gonna make their way into this. We're gonna format this in probably a few different ways depending on our audience. Um, and uh put this forward for a final review and approval in November. Uh, but the strategic priorities that are included in here are what are going to unlock our, the next phase of our budget development process. So it's really important for us tonight to continue to say that, yes, these are the strategic priorities we would move forward with. And um, again, those originated out of the October meeting. So jumping into um this and uh I'll just sort of pause on some of these key feedback points if you guys would like to offer. Is it still, oh, uh, do you want to click on Zoom, Sophia, please? There we go. Uh, and then you can make the window to the right. Um, just yeah, slide that over and we'll make it as big as we can. And I can zoom in on this on my side too. Um. Oops. So if you go back, yeah, if you go back to Zoom and just leave that window open and make it large with a square at the top. All right, can everybody see that? Great. Um, so again, you saw in the appendices, uh, the very long journey that we've taken, very robust, very thorough, great conversations that we've taken that have woven themselves into this plan and that have generated things like the mission and vision that are up here at the core values that are included. Um, I'm not gonna go over too much of this, but uh please stop me if you have thoughts or feedback about any of these sections as we go.
And Doug, just jump in if you have something because I'm not always seeing you on my screen here. So I want to make sure we don't lose your thinking on this.
Hey, thank you.
And so moving into sort of our key methods framework, this is a table that I'm actually not married to in here because it folds into our strategic priorities and goals. And that's kind of where I want to spend more of our time. This is starting to outline four big buckets and you'll sort of see that theme through this is what are the four overarching strategies that we have at TCD? Where are the four big bucket areas that interweave all of the work that we do? What are the four big bucket infographic widgets we want to put on the top of our uh, you know, collective impact statement? And so nested under this, like you saw in my email, are gonna be all of those other like ninety-seven or, you know, nine hundred and seventy data points that we track, right? For uh our own research purposes, for our own um grants and deliverables, for our own annual plans. Those will have a lot more data, but these are the big uh macro metrics that we're looking at. Uh, so these are our strategic priorities and goals. You saw this in slide form at the October meeting around big bucket protecting, restore natural resources, super comprehensive, touching all of our topics and landscapes and types. Um, policies, watershed health, farmland preservation, all of, a lot of protection of all of those pieces. Um, I'm going through this really quickly because we've been through it before. Um, our climate resilience and disaster preparedness. This is all of those adaptations and innovations we've talked about. Um, working with jurisdictions in a lot of these spaces. I'm doing a lot of our wildfire prevention, preparedness, uh recovery, drought, flood, you name it. Um, and a lot of citizen engagement in those and planning processes are wrapped up in that. Creating community access and equity. This is also where we start, start to marry more of the human element in this, right? This has all of our education, all of our K-12, our outreach, um, access to food, access to land. You start to see also our farmland preservation, farming pieces sort of pop up in these. Um, you can see some of the goals listed here. And then this one, I still stuck on here. Um, investing or in organizational excellence and leadership. One of the themes that came from the board um in our September meeting um and August meeting was really wanting to rise as community leaders in a lot of conservation spaces um and really identify ourselves as a, as a leader and a catalyst for a lot of conservation in Thurston County. And so you're starting to see both the external leadership component here as well as the internal excellence that are gonna set us up for success. And so this is still all of our, you know, clean audits, our um committing to diversified and sustainable growth in our funding aspect. Um, and also making sure that we have excellent um uh professional development for our staff teams and that all of the people are, that are participating in TCD value and engage in the culture that we've established. So lots of stuff in those twelve goals. Within that, we'll use those goals as a framework to create the actions, right? In our annual plans moving forward. And so this strategic wrap-up allows us flexibility to be a little bit more adaptive based on emergent needs and um funding scenarios that we have in any given year. And allows a little bit more flexibility for um other innovations, ideas, opportunities that might come before the board um to direct our organization to engage in. Any thoughts on those?
Doug, anything?
Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, you, you've uh covered something that I was gonna bring up. I think staff capacity to make sure we have adequate staff with the adequate training. I would put in the supervisors too.
Sure.
Because I, I think so many times uh we have expertise from our, from our supervisors, but we don't use it much. I think we do on our district, but I see that around.
So Doug, uh, are you seeing that as an addition to goal eleven under priority four?
Uh, can we scroll down? I think it was under eleven.
Your goal eleven, yeah.
Yeah, increase staff and technical capacity to meet growing community needs. So we could say staff and board technical capacity with, would you like that addition?
Yeah, I think that and organizational capacity too. Anyway, I don't know if we want to get too nitpicky on this.
Well, I think it's a good idea to put, to put the board in there. Yeah.
Well, I, I really like the idea of uh the way we're going about this now. I like big audacious ideas that we can look forward to. And then we get the, the technical, how we're gonna do it later on. This is kind of the why.
Well, we get more audacious as we go forward in the plan, so.
True. Okay, point out ostacious when we get there, okay?
Okay, um, anything else up to this point, Jennifer or David?
A little bit, uh, that maybe kind of ties in with the, the next section around uh, key initiatives and the K P I's. Um, so one of the things that um, I noted as I was going through this was around priority three, and I know earlier in the vision two, we talked a little bit about um, access where everyone has access to land and food. And um, talking about uh, you know, increasing access to land and food for low income and underserved communities. I have a sense of what we mean by that, but um, you know, just looking at that access to food for underserved communities, that could be a bunch of different things. We're not talking about distributing food in the same way that the um, that the food bank does. I'm assuming that, right? But it could be read in that way. And so when I was going through the document, kind of looking down into the next sections around the key initiatives and the K P I's. I didn't see anything around that or the K P I's tied to that priority. So um, I'm sure there's a place then where we can talk about what we actually mean when we talk about increasing access to planted food.
And the intent of that, and, and tell me if you like this or not, was that that would be defined in our annual plans because we have had partnerships with the food bank.
Okay.
Um, and our conservation district to the west of us is sort of a glue and go between with farmers and the food bank as part of leaning and providing fresh, healthy food. That may be a direction we want to move in. It may not be a direction that we want to move in at T C D. So these are, these are intentionally sort of big and broad because it's going to include work we're doing directly and work we're facilitating and fostering in our community with our partners. Uh, but that level of specificity of like increasing access to food, water for low income communities would be something I would, I would think we would detail in our annual plan. This year, we want to um, create ten new community gardens or five or whatever. And we want to work with this mini low income residents to do X or you know, we would have that level of specificity in our next plan because that objective might also change and we might meet this goal in a different way in two years or in ten years. And we build on that. So it's going to allow us to still roll it up to the top without constantly changing the big plan. But the plans annually can adapt to still meet that goal. And then we can tell this huge collective impact story when we get to the end. So that was the intent is that that's where the level of detail comes from. But if you feel like that's not clear, you want to change something in here, let me know. We can also include um, which we've done in past plans to more of a glossary section at the end. If that's useful to talk about some of the terms that we have.
And so then we're looking at the key initiatives and then those K P I's. Are those tying directly back to each one of the priorities or not necessarily?
So the intent is that yes, these are all folding in those big bucket priorities. The key actions and initiatives is a place for us to add a little bit more detail. Um, that we want to be really specific and intentional about, like developing our conservation and education center, right? Does that meet some of those four priorities and some of the goals under that? Absolutely, probably multiple, right? Um, and that's a specific initiative of the districts that we know we're committed to and it's a big deal. And we want to stick in here as like a guiding star for us. And there may be other really big pieces that we want to stick in there. Yeah. So that's your opportunity too, for some flexibility. What are those big North Star items that you really want to see happen very specifically? And then we'll have a lot of other specifics in the annual plans too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, I have one thing under key initiatives and it's.
Beautiful segue to this action.
Yes, it is. Related to um, the fifth bullet under key initiatives. And I talked to Sarah earlier about this. So this kind of says, we're going to bring people together to develop farmland preservation programs. I would like to, and I've said this before, I want us to be much more activist about that. So I think, I'd like to see something that says, you know, we will become the regional leader in farmland preservation and we will seek and secure expanded resources for that purpose. Um, to be very clear about, we're making a move into this direction and we're going to go find the money to make this happen in ways it hasn't happened before. And I think that's consistent with the discussions we've had in previous meetings about that topic.
How do you feel like that looks to you?
Did we use the vacuum firm rather than become?
Yes, I just off the cuff, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'd say secure resources. One thing to look, I want to get it.
Love it.
And you know, a, a fully functional farmland preservation program is one thing, but I think outside of that, which is a much bigger objective, we can do things like we've talked about, like we can fund easements, we can fund land purchases. So somehow we need to be, you know, need to put that piece in. It's great to work with other people and big program things, but let's also figure out how to get money and save land.
Oh, there we go.
And fund easements and acquisition of farmland.
I'm going to highlight this and also read it again later and make sure it all makes sense.
That I'm more comfortable with that kind of language.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
I like that. Do we want to have a parking lot for this stuff? Because the thing that jumps out at me is easements and acquisitions of farmland and forest lands or working lands. I'm thinking of aquaculture too. But I don't know if we want to put in too much and get it diluted.
What do we said farm and other working lands?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else in key initiatives here? How we doing on time? We got about twenty-three minutes left here for our work session. All right, let's move on then. There's other things you want to highlight, Sarah?
Um, just uh, the rest will be brief and just stop me if you have any feedback really. And these are the big bucket roll up metrics. These are the gigantic, again, we have infographics. These are the widgets that we count on the front page of our website, giant metrics. We will have so much other data that we will be aggregating in our annual plans and putting in our annual reports and storytelling that's assigned and housed under all of these big buckets. Um, but these are kind of like big indicators right here. Um, so lots of things fall under those. Um, and there's lots of different measurements that will roll up to these. Um, and so I'm really excited because this is moving us in a direction of demonstrating bigger, broader, bolder collective impact. Being able to make these big statements rather than uh, quantifying the seven different types of conservation plans that we do as metrics of success. These are big. And, and so I think that that's going to put us in a better position to rise as community leaders in the future. Um, and tell again, the collective impact of the conservation work that we do here at T C D. Uh, so unless there's no other questions here, this just really delves into some detail about each of those. I'm going to skip that. This is what I've continued to say about integrating into the annual plan. Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, based on what you said before you changed subjects, I think it may, having these bigger buckets makes it way more sellable to elected officials. For, you know, rates and charges again and going to the legislature. I think that's a really good move.
Thank you. I'm really excited about this too. Um, and then just again, highlighting that we're going to use those big buckets and all of the other widgets that we track in the testimonials and the maps and the G I S data and the videos and everything else to tell this story so that it's not just as much about widget counting and do we get seven of the nine done in this period of timeframe? But what did that do? What was the change on the landscape? What was the change in the community? How did we transform the world around us and start to tell the story in that way and use these as benchmarks a- and goals internally along the way? Um, the rest I think is pretty, I, I, unless you have particular feedback, I think you read it. There's a framework here with a timeline for moving um, through the next couple of years and how we'll build in the line and start to achieve the pieces of our strategic plan in the next five. Um, a section about evaluation and adaptive management, right? We want to continue to keep this as a living document. Um, and amend it as we need. Our long-term financial strategy that the board has previously approved is in here as our uh, one of our major uh, guiding principles. And then there's this longer term vision and goals section, which um, starts to uh, look beyond this, these five years. And I think a lot of our initiatives that we are embarking on are much longer than a five-year initiative. And so we want to have further goalposts out there. And I think uh, with the relationships we want to cultivate too, we want to show them that we are thinking that far in advance and we're planning for success in the distant future as well and, and demonstrate that we're capable of that and sophisticated enough as an organization. And um, and so that's what this whole section is, is sort of like, this is what the future looks like for us. And here's the pathway for us to get there. Other than that, there's a whole bunch of appendices with a bunch of different data and things um, in there. And some of that is still need to populate. But uh, any other thoughts or questions on these pieces?
I think it looks really good. Yeah, I know we all discussed it a few times. So it's nice to see this in action. Looking good. Doug, anything else?
Yeah, I think we should say something about how what we're doing ties in with the county plans and the other partners that we have.
Yeah, there'll be a whole appendices on all of the plans. Both the data that we use as foundation for the work we do, but then also the work that we're doing, how it's achieving goals of all of these other plans. You've seen things lately about like the climate strategy for Thurston County and the work that we're doing and how it meets some of those benchmarks. So you'll see the ebb and flow of those in this, in one of these next appendices.
That's what I was, exactly what I was thinking.
Just show how it all connects.
I can do that.
Like a flow diagram or something. And then just a minor comment, but there on appendix one, right where you're at there conveniently enough. Um, under threats, it's a small thing, but under threats, we did talk a bunch about climate change and I don't see that in there.
Great. Include that. I'm just going to put this in here as a.
As a placeholder.
Pointer.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, feel like we've come a long way on this document and we've really done what the board is supposed to do, which is take a look at this higher level kind of stuff and not get into the weeds like we did in the last planning process. So good work, everybody.
I think this went so well.
We'll see a final next month and we'll get to adopt it. All right.
Sounds great. Thank you, guys.
All right. Um, I have five then. Um, the future of the T C D growers conference. So by way of context here, we had a conference um, about uh, twenty-two months ago, twenty-one months ago. Um, and we said that and staff recommended and we agreed that we're going to do this every other year, something like that. Well, that would mean that it's coming up in twenty twenty-six. So um, Sarah and I talked about this and thought, let's put this back on the agenda here and see where the board's at on this um, and see if that's still something we want to pursue. I noted in going through our strategic plan, we talked specifically about conferences and workshops and bringing people together around science. So it would seem to be absolutely consistent with our um, soon to be adopted strategic plan. But uh, that's my kind of intro to it. What do you want to say about it, Sarah?
Yeah, we learned a lot doing this conference. Um, and we learned uh, what additional sort of resources we would like to have in the future to do something well of this scale. We do a couple of major events a year already on harvest festival. We had, had over six hundred folks at it. Our plant sale this year had over seventeen hundred people at it. Yes, I know. Hence, we need this, Sarah, man. And uh, and so a third larger scale event is a lot for our team and financially and, and it's also engaging in a new area of expertise. And so this conversation is really helpful right now because it's going to inform how we um, uh, align our budget resources next year. Next year is going to be a little bit of a, of a pinch point, right? Where resources are leaner before we get into the next biennium as we're looking at um, doing our rate study for rates and charges. And so there's two sort of things that I want to hear from the board. Um, one is would you like to do this conference next year? And what are your sort of goals and objectives? What's the size and scale? What's the focus you would like? So that we can align those resources. I think um, I think we would love to engage in some consultant support in this in the future. Um, because our current education outreach team has a bunch of grants and deliverables they're responsible for. Uh, and we learned that this really swept that team um, for several months and the, and put the focus on that. Um, and so that'll give us some direction as we were preparing the budget proposal for you guys. Um, but I'd also just love to hear, we, we tried a thing and uh, the audience that participated loved it. Um, is that what the board's intent was? Would you guys like to see a different style of conference or summit or conversation or you know, what do you guys really want to see now that we've tried something out? Again, it was a success for what happened. But is that meeting the board's intent? Because I've heard a lot of things like wanting to engage with innovations in climate science. Um, growers on the ground, you know, urban and rural. I've heard we want to convene jurisdictions and we want to talk more about uh, being intentional with policy. Um, and we want to have more of this planning summit, you know, sort of. So some feedback on that would be really helpful. And then we can sort of think about size and scale and appropriate budget if you want to do this in twenty twenty-six. Um, and if you want to look beyond twenty twenty-six, I think scaling up is, is an option. Not necessarily maybe next year in twenty twenty-six, doing a bigger, broader something. Uh, but we can plan to do that in future years. So yeah, I think that's what I'm looking to get feedback on. We want to make sure it's what you want.
All right, I'll start with you again, Doug, just so I don't forget you.
Thank you. Uh, question, do we have the capacity? It sounds like you've addressed that. I've been thinking about that. The first thing that popped in my mind was, okay, is this more important than having a harvest festival? I'm not sure. Uh, I think the harvest festival is good. And I think the plant sale is mandatory personally. So do we want to take on another thing? I like the idea, and I like the idea of uh, maybe contracting it.
Yeah.
Or at least part of it.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's, that's where we're at is can we take on another large event? Likely with some consultant support, right? If we can retain a cons, an event planner, right? To help with a lot of our la- large events, then our staff can be more in an advisory and direction capacity for some of these pieces. Um, and just with the nature of timing and putting this in, if we want to look at twenty twenty-six, we're looking at fall because we need to start planning, securing space, doing marketing, you know, getting speaker sessions, all of that with months in advance. And so um, perhaps doing this in and around or in conjunction with something like the harvest festival could be an opportunity so that there's this community element and this educational component. So um, we're exploring a lot of those ideas to make sure that it isn't too much for our staff team all at one time, but they also have some space in between that.
Yeah, and I would try to solicit some capital land trust and some of the other people we work with that have a, an impact on what we're trying to do. If we can engage some of those.
Yeah, and our benefit that we did the night before at our growers conference is a, as a benefit for the Southwest Washington Food Hub. Um, I think we're over really well and was really well attended. There was a lot of excitement for that. There were a lot of people that it sold out and wanted to buy tickets at the last minute for that. And so we definitely learned again, a lot doing that process for the first time and how to do it better next time. Um, but there's a lot of support out there for us. And so we want to make sure we're aligning ourselves with that.
And that's one way to be the leaders that we're talking about trying to be in the fut- more so in the future too.
Yeah, that's what I would say, right? That uh, fits in line with what we've been discussing and who we want to be, right? Is, is having events like these, I think, and bringing the community to get it. Uh, sharing our knowledge and, and bringing in, in other partners to share their knowledge as well. Uh, you mentioned uh, this being a fall time and uh, possibility of a new position for an event planner. Is that a, a possibility with our budget? Is that a, a something that would be funded through uh, rates and charges or through a grant?
Yeah, um, hmm. So as part of our budget development process, I think after we get feedback on sort of size, scale, shape, flavor that you'd like to see, um, we're going to say, take that back to the budget and say, what can we afford next year? Um, I'm not proposing at this point, I don't think we'll have enough resources to add a staffing position, although an outreach assistant in the next two years is, is coming. Um, uh, but a consultant, we would probably put an R F P out for an event planner to help with some of these pieces and that would, that would come from an, our unrestricted sources. So this would come from one of our program allocations and we would secure that amount of. And we would secure that amount of funding in there. This is, yeah, and then we would look, we, we would seek to integrate this. Into any uh grant proposals that are applicable moving forward. Sometimes conferences are really hard to pay for, and that's why they do fundraising and sponsorship a lot of times for them. Um, and that could be part of a consultant um package, right? Is to help us secure sponsorships and fundraising.
So we do the plant sale, let's have a fundraising event. No, that would be specifically, I'm just saying, you know, i- is there a possibility of maybe making the Harvest Festival somehow a fundraising event as well? In the future, yes.
Absolutely. I think fundraising in general and donations um and investment from stakeholders is really under tapped. And I would love to see us have intentional conversations about that when we're looking at our Conservation Education Center development. And what pays, what do we want a capital campaign to pay for? Where do we want to utilize fundraising and sponsorship strategies of, of variety of ways? And where do those go?
Okay, thanks. Do you have any thoughts?
Um, you answered a lot of the questions I was having around staff uh resources. Um, so I think that makes sense. And um, and I agree with David too, you know, doing these, doing a conference like this does a lot, I think, to position T C D as a leader in the space. And you know, one of the things that I really loved about the conference was that it was different than a lot of these other events that I go to. In that you were bringing together um chefs and people in food with around the producers. Which I think made it unique and um, and a draw for a lot of folks. And so I think that there is an opportunity for us to again, kind of, you know, seeing what we can do. That's maybe a little bit different than the other conferences sort of being out there um and offer something different. And I think it's a, it would be a great opportunity for us to take that leadership role. Great.
Okay, um, so a couple of thoughts. I think the, the plant sale and harvest festival are great. They're a different audience than something like this, which um, there's some degree of education in both of those events. But I've seen this as more kind of higher level connection around people who are actually managing land. So we got some of those people to this conference last year. But we didn't get as many as I had hoped to get. And we had a whole lot of students there, which was interesting too. But again, I didn't think was our primary audience was not necessarily Evergreen students and helping them in their education. Um, I agree that the social component and the partnership thing was awesome on the first night. So I think that to build that in and that creates opportunities for funding for sure. Um, but I do think this is aligned with everything we said we want to do for our strategic plan. Um, at one point we talked about, oh, maybe this conference should be for policymakers and policy people. I don't think that's a road to go down, because I think you can do a whole lot of work and then not have people show up for those things at the last minute. And in the end, I think our role is really education and support for people who are, you know, managing the landscape. To the extent that we can inform them about policy and get them to become advocates in policy change and talk to those other people, that's awesome. Um, but I don't want to do a conference for policymakers, like those things very work. Um, and then in terms of really thinking longer term, um, yeah, I think, you know, let's do something next year. Fall sounds great. But then let's start to think about how we make this regional. How do we work with Gray's Harbor? And how do we work with these other districts on a regional conference that really brings together a whole lot of people that are managing landscapes? Cause we could learn a lot from Gray's Harbor and they could learn from Pacific and Pacific could learn from us and, you know, all kinds of things. So however big we wanted to make this eventually.
Yeah.
So that's, that's my thought on it. I love the idea of getting a contract man uh out there for an event planner. Somebody that can focus on this, who does that stuff as a living. There's people out there in this community that do that, so. I'd say put it in the budget and let's make this happen in twenty twenty six and um build momentum from there.
Yeah, and I would love to keep bringing this item back in our work session so we can continue to glean ideas and thoughts from you guys. About how you'd like to see this and, and then share exciting tidbits as you're going back out into the community then. So you can help us drum up interest and support for these pieces. So uh, we'll put something together and a proposal for next year based on the resources that we have available in twenty twenty six. With the vision that this can grow in a bunch of different ways moving forward in subsequent years. When uh we have more resources available.
Right. Okay, you got the direction you need on that one then?
I do.
Okay, um, we've got about four minutes left here. I think we can get through a couple of quick things here. So I think the next one is just a heads up that we've added some things to the consent agenda at the last minute, which we don't like to do. But these are very standard contracts. Nothing unusual about either of these. Um, but just wanted to say if there's any concerns or questions, uh again, we don't like to add this at the last minute, but that's just how it worked out today. If somebody wants to give us money today, we should make it happen tonight. Okay, uh, anything update on the C E C this month?
Yeah.
Yeah, we uh met yesterday, our subcommittee meeting met yeah, uh yesterday. Uh, the Conservation District uh got under a contract with the Department of Energy, uh Department of.
Enterprise.
Enterprise. Sorry, I always call them D E S, so I never use their full name. But uh, we are there uh with them to uh help us uh find a piece of property. Uh, we've uh been working with the City of Tumwater and the Port of Olympia for some time now, but really things haven't been going anywhere. Uh, so we've let the guy from D E S know that yes, we want to still pursue that property with the Dolmans. If that's a possibility, but also look for other opportunities that are out there. So he's got our list now of uh our, what our wish list for a piece of property. And he's gonna check his databases and bring us back a few uh, few uh pieces of property to look at, so.
Yeah, and the nice opportunity is that uh doing a property search is one of the um functions that the, the D E S can do. But they can also help with the real estate um transactions. And so negotiations, making offers and sort of helping through that process if we so choose is an opportunity. And we're really excited about um utilizing those expertises if we can. Um, also, uh, I have another partnership meeting with the Director of the Port of Olympia next week. So that we can just have a bigger, broader conversation about collaboration, not necessarily tied to the uh property opportunity that's on the table. But just in general, how to continue to align ourselves and the value that our Conservation Education Center brings. To some of their initiatives and objectives that they would like to see happen and how we can mutually support each other in that endeavor moving forward. So um, looking forward to just having a bigger, broader, robust conversation around that. And continuing to secure that as a partnership.
Okay, thanks for the update. Uh, takes us to our last item on the work session, which is some updates and announcements. We'll start with the board. Doug, do you have anything?
Yes, a couple of things. Uh, I mentioned in the chat that the friends of, any, friends of N A C D has a small grants program. That the growers conference might be able to tap into to at least get started. I'd also like to let you know that N A C D has got a thing called the Next Generation Leadership Institute. And what that does is uh groom the next leaders for N A C D. Lastly, every year, N A C D gives twenty scholarships around the country. And they're for supervisors only. Sorry about that, guys. And if any of our board is interested, uh, I would suggest getting your name into Ryan and Heather. Very quickly saying if there's a, if there's a uh, a scholarship available to Washington, we would like to have it. Uh, I've set them the criteria I've used for the last few years and it was a first come, first served basis. So if we get in our, or in the water early, that would help. And that's it.
Doug, can you remind us when and where that conference is?
Uh, San Antonio, and I think it's February fourteenth through the nineteenth, twenty twenty six.
Okay, thank you.
And there is an easement uh session that they're gonna have, or at least it's planned at this point.
Right. David?
Looking for me?
Um, I'll just report that I was on vacation for three weeks. Uh, but one of the things I did is I went to the Terra Madre of the America's Slow Food Conference in Sacramento. And that was really interesting and um went to a lot of different sessions, got to eat a lot of good food, watch chefs. But I also went to a great session on farm bill and the prognosis for actually ever getting another farm bill, which isn't good. It seems like the um, the days of having these five-year farm bills and bringing all these programs together in an omnibus bill. Are probably gone, at least in the short term. Um, and so a lot of the thinking now is how do we grab pieces that used to be funded by farm bill? And make sure that they get funded in other ways. So that was really interesting. The other one directly related to our work here is everybody who came to this conference was talking about the loss of farmland. And I went to a session on that and whether they were in, you know, um, Mexico, whether they were in B C. Whether they were anywhere in the U S, it's happening everywhere and everybody's struggling to figure out how we come up with more funding to prevent farmland loss. And different, different approaches. So not a lot of answers, but it's happening everywhere and people are talking about it. But I'd recommend anybody that wants to go to a fascinating, absolutely free conference. Um, this is going to happen every other year in Sacramento. And um, they've got a ten-year contract with the Convention Center down there and they plan to grow it each year. And uh, it was worth attending, for sure. Yeah. Last thing, question, a few months ago, you said that we had been approached by Matchless Brewing. About a potential partnership in the way that maybe the Gray's Harbor District has worked with um, the, the brewing company. Uh, and we haven't heard anything further about that. Just wondering where that stands.
They said it's hop harvest. We will talk to you again in November.
All right, we have, make sure we follow that one, because I think that is an interesting opportunity when people want to come to us.
Yeah.
With ideas for promotion, collaboration, that's awesome.
And so the last sort of bit we shared with them was the structures that Gray's Harbor and Pacific both used in their conversations around that. Which is maybe a little different than what Matchless was thinking. They were thinking, if you're going to have a benefit, you wouldn't purchase a whole bunch of beer and then sell it. Um, which we can't do with public funding. So I've pitched these other models that are happening in other places. And they said, great, after hop season, let's sit down and let's have some more conversation about this.
Thank you. Um, and then you get the last word here, sir, if there's any other uh.
Two fast things. Uh, one, if you'd like to attend the W A C D annual meeting, uh, please let Sophia know. So we can make sure you're registered and your accommodations are booked while the window of booking is still open. Um, so let her know, one way or the other, if you'd like to go or not, so we can check you off the list. Um, it is also that time of year again to do routine things like social harassment training for board and staff. Uh, you're going to get an email with some information about a training component to that. Um, and we'll have an item on the December work session to just revisit, review that. Um, and those best practices. Um, so stay tuned for that even.
All right, thank you. And with that, it is six oh three, we will end the work session and we will break until six thirty and then convene the board meeting at six thirty. Okay, it is six thirty, believe it or not, but we're going to get started with our October twenty second board meeting. Welcome everyone. Um, we're recording this obviously. Um, we have four out of five board supervisors here tonight. Um, Mary Ann Tonkins is excused. Um, we also have some staff, Sarah and uh Sophia have our legal counsel Ben, and we have some guests as well. So welcome everyone to the meeting. Um, first thing up here is an agenda review. We will, um, I want to say there's one thing that was added to the agenda. Um, the uh, in the last couple of days, that is a executive session, which is the last us, number eight on our agenda here. I requested an executive session to uh kind of kick off the performance review process for our executive director. So other than that, it's the agenda that was um presented earlier with the addition of the two items under consent. That we talked about in the uh work session. So with that, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda. I want to approve the agenda moved by David. Is there a second?
A second?
Seconded by Jennifer. So those in favor of this agenda, please say aye. Okay, it has been approved. That means item three is our consent agenda. Um, usual items here, we have some meeting minutes, our financial report, and then a number of agreements. People that want to give us money and help us do good work. So is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Moved by Jennifer. Is there a second? Seconded by David. Uh, we beat you out there, Doug. You're, you're, you're a solid third though. Uh, okay, so vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that has passed unanimously. That takes us to public comment. This is the point at which any member of the public can address the board for up to three minutes on any topic that's on their mind. That would also be interesting and relevant to us. Um, is there anyone who wishes to uh make public comment tonight? Okay. It seems like there is no public comment this evening, so we will close public comment. And we'll move on to partner reports, item four. Um, first up, here's N R C S. Um, DeShelle is not here, probably because she is furloughed at the moment. And not actively working for her employer. So it'll be interesting to hear what she has to report if and when the federal government opens and she joins us again. Um, do we have Josh online tonight?
We do.
Hi, Josh, welcome. You want to give us an update for the commission?
You're on mute, Josh.
How about that? Hey, you got, you guys got me?
That's better.
All right. Hey, sorry about that. Uh, yeah, it's uh, not, not a whole lot this month. Uh, looks like you got the area meeting recap. I know that Sarah and Mary Ann were there and Doug. Um, so they'll probably hit the highlights of that. And you also had um, a great recap of kind of what we heard about the elections legislation. Uh, C D election legislation that, that may be coming forward. The only other thing I had mentioned at this point is that our um area, your area. Uh, representative to the commission is up for election this year. And so um, you know, you all are, anybody in the west area is able to put their name in the hat. But um, we've confirmed everybody's emails. And so you'll have a uh opportunity to participate in the election process that will be at the. Um, I guess it's December now, uh, the December W A C D meeting. So other than that. Happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Josh, is there, are there any announced candidates for that commission position yet?
Not yet. Nope, I think, I think those will be announced at the commission or at the W A C D meeting. Um, I, I, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but there's usually like a candidate forum. Where those that have thrown their name in will, ma- maybe Doug has more to offer here. I know there's some that are interested.
Yeah, there is a candidate forum at the W A C D annual meeting in Airway Heights, and there are candidates for each of the positions. Some of them only have one candidate. I think there's one. I can't remember which one. Vice President? Sorry, you may remember. Anyway, there was one, one position that had two candidates.
And are we, are we talking about the same thing, Doug? Are we talking about the commission west area rep?
I don't think so.
Okay, the west area rep to the commission is up this year and Dean is not running, so there's going to be someone brand new. And they will be elected at the, on Wednesday of the W A C D meeting. And their first, that it will be effective immediately and they will be able to participate in the, I think it's December fourth. Uh, commission meeting.
Yeah, you've got it right. I was getting confused there. My understanding is there were three, maybe four candidates for the commission position for the southwest region. And I was talking about the uh, uh, elections for the W A C D uh leadership.
Okay, different things, so thanks for clarifying that. Uh, let's see, any other questions for uh Josh? Okay, thanks for the update, Josh.
Yep.
Um, last, under partner reports, back to you, Doug, for W A C D or N A C D updates.
Okay, we've got just as, we already talked about W A C D. One of the things we didn't mention but was that Heather Smith has been reelected. Uh, for the Southwest Area Directorate. So that's a good thing. Um, for N A C D. Uh, one of the things that's bothered me, as it's bothered several others, is what happens to all these resolutions that go forth? And we have three. And we had three from W A C D last year. Uh one on C R P signatures from Lincoln, one on uh Forest Service Community Wildfire Defense Grant Scoring uh from Shalane, excuse me, from uh Cascadia. And then the third one was the role of F S A and N R C S, basically rolling those together and having N R C S do the technical stuff and uh F S A stick to the financial. And basically what's going on there is nothing's going on because of the way the current administration is uh furloughing people, and I would point out in my my report that I submitted that was written, ninety-six percent of the N R C S people have been furloughed. And how how is that gonna help anybody, anyway? The other question I asked about the government affairs was, okay, what's the point of submitting new resolutions if nothing's gonna happen? And a couple of good uh responses, one is they stay on the books for five years for N A C D, so that's gonna outlaw outlast this current administration. So they will continue to advocate for things with A C D, and feasibility is not a requirement for passage. And then I also mentioned the N A C D annual meeting in San Antonio on February fourteenth through the nineteenth. And if somebody's interested in a scholarship to to get your name in. And tha- that's all I have for W A C D and N A C D, except for I think starting in December, I will be off the W A C D board, but Sarah is on it now, so. Sarah, can you provide reports uh at that time?
And. Hey Doug, quick, quick question, oh, sorry, T J.
No, go ahead, Josh.
Uh I I was at a board meeting earlier today and they were talking about something from N A C D being hosted in Washington.
Yeah.
Do you have an E N?
Yeah, a couple of years out, uh the
Oh, okay.
Wanted to go ahead with that. Uh there was one in Tri-Cities about seven or eight years ago and probably ten years ago, there's one in Spokane, and we're talking the summer meeting and or the regional meeting, and the talk was combining the regional meeting with the uh summer meeting. And when they've talked to me previously, I've suggested Tri-Cities and Spokane again, uh somebody suggested Wenatchee. Pretty tough to get into Wenatchee in a jet.
Um Doug, your term on N A C D is coming to an end too, isn't it?
Yes, uh the N A C D or the W A C D National Director is the N A C D Board Rep. So when I'm off the W A C D board, I automatically go off the N A C D board. And I've provided W A C D staff with the contacts at N A C D of who should be contacted with the new person, what their what their contact information is, their emails, phone numbers, a photograph. So it should should grease the skins for whoever replaces me.
Okay, thank you very much. Um that concludes reports. Um we did have a couple of W A C D things here on the agenda, but it seems like we already recapped the um area meeting. Is there anything further to say about the annual meeting other than to let Sophia know if you're planning to go, which Sarah reminded us of earlier? But nothing further on that one?
Yeah, there there are planning a field trip to Four Lakes for a a grain elevator tour.
Yep.
T J did did um in the W A C D recap, did they, did you guys talk about like that uh the governor uh is requesting a two-point-eight two-point-eight percent reduction in spending from the agency, did that come up?
No, tell us more about that, Josh, cuz we didn't talk about it.
Okay, I I that was the first time I had heard it was uh at the area meeting is when James, our Executive Director at the Commission mentioned that, I think it was James, it could have been Dan.
It was.
Uh okay, that um we've been directed to kind of start a two-point-eight percent reduction in spending, so. Um not sure where that's going, but that was just the one thing that was very specific to the agencies that came out of from my information from last week, so.
Yeah, that's 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 consistent with what I heard, Josh, he uh James also, James uh Thompson, the Commission uh Executive Director, passed out a sheet that has the the amounts that are requested for Forest Health and Community Wildfire, two-point-five million. C T A, two-point-two-five million. Business and Technology Transformation, three-point-two one-time request. It it sounded like to me that he's gonna be bold and maybe fiddle with that two-point-eight percent, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Heather wants that, oh sorry, Heather wants to add something here too.
I just wanna add that it was it was specified also that in previous years when they've asked for de- for reductions, they've asked each agency to tell them where those reductions should come from, and this time that is not what's happening. They're just going through and cutting what they decide to cut without any agency input.
Okay. To be continued, thanks for bringing that one up, Josh, we hadn't heard about it.
Yep. Yeah, thanks.
All right, item six then is uh elections, we have an election coming up next year for David's seat. Um and so we had a process, we had a memo in our packet from um Susan outlining the process and an election date of March seventeenth, it appears that the process looks more or less like the last at least two rounds or so that we've done this, uh contracting with the county um voter people to to run the election, so no big changes on any of that, but is there anything further to say about that, Sarah?
Nope, this is very standard process, it's a well-oiled machine at this point, this is your sneak preview of the resolution that you'll need to pass. Um that'll be slated for next month, unless you have any changes, questions, or revisions, but everything is super routine and working well.
And how you made a decision about the way you intend to run for reelection?
Not uh yet, but I imagine I probably will.
Okay.
Yeah.
You'll let us know.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, great. Um last item before executive session then is to take a look at what's coming up next month. We could put that up on our screen here. Wait, are we there? Okay, we're there, there, we're not on mine, I see.
I can go back to the top.
Yeah, go back up to the top of the work session there, so let's take a look at the work session.
And will you push share again, Sophia, and then make sure we're selecting this document so Doug can see it too, it's the one to the left, the window to the left.
Okay, there we go, all right, so uh another staff presentation, maybe a community partner presentation, uh possibly. And uh and then we do need to look at um white papers and any resolutions um that will be coming up at the W A C D annual meeting, that'll be our last meeting before the W A C D meeting, so our le- chance to kinda look at things and see if we have a united position on any issues that are gonna be coming up during um the the annual meeting over in uh Spokane. Um we will have a final draft of the strategic plan to look at um in the work session, which then um if it looks good, we will be adopting later in in the board meeting that night. Um do we need item six on there anymore? I think we can delete that because our long-term funding plan is not part of our strategic plan. Okay, so there we go, and then a standing item for C E C, so that's the work session. And then on the board meeting, some placeholders for some normal stuff there, partner reports, um et cetera, we do need to add um the adoption of the strategic plan underneath um governance, I think, as opposed to consent, probably do it as a separate item.
And maybe some more time under governance if we're gonna run through our uh budget drafts and do some of that work.
Well, is that the first item on six A there, is that the budget review? Okay, so we'll do that and and uh and maybe it we should do the strategic plan first so that we're adopting it so that we can be clear about how it informs our budget discussion. So it's kinda flip the order of those two things.
Okay, how many minutes do you want?
T J, can I ask a really dumb question?
No, only good questions, Josh. Now, go ahead.
Okay, well, this dumb question is gonna be super dumb, like, is your strategic plan like your like when you guys say strategic plan, is that your long-range plan?
It's more than a long-range plan, um it is a far-thinking plan that goes out a long way, that really identifies at a high level where this organization's gonna go and what we expect it to result in in terms of community impacts over a long term, and if you haven't seen the draft yet, uh soon as Sarah cleans up the the uh kind of the changes we made tonight and some edits and stuff, we'll make sure that you get a copy and you can take a look at it before we have uh a chance to adopt it next month, so if you have any feedback on it, you can get it to the board and we can consider that before um everything gets finalized.
But it serves that purpose with regard to statutory obligations.
The statutory, yes, of course.
Yes, okay, yeah, perfect.
Okay. All right, so with that, that's what we're looking at next month. For now.
Doug has a hand up.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, I'd say just in the work session, we talked about who wants to go to the N A C D annual meeting, that will give us a little bit of time to prepare for that.
Okay. Put that under.
Tend to white papers and resolutions.
If there is any percolating interest in N A C D, and you know that now, uh that's helpful as we build our budget for two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay, good to know. Okay. So with that, we are going to convene in an executive session here shortly. Um this is to review the performance of the Executive Director, this is permitted under R C W forty-two thirty-one ten. Um we will be in the executive session for no more than fifteen minutes. Um the folks attending the executive session will be only the board members and our legal counsel, Mr. Kushman. At the end of that fifteen minutes, we will come back into a public session, we will report out from the executive session. And then we will wrap up this meeting, um we will not take any actions in the executive session because the law prevents us from doing that, and we like to not violate laws here.
And before we do it, can someone on Zoom do a non-recorded breakout room for Doug?
I did.
Okay. All right, so Doug, you'll move into a separate breakout room as soon as we clear the room here, and it is now
Take care, everybody.
Six fifty, so we will come back at seven oh five. We went about two minutes seven oh eight. We're back in public session, we just concluded an executive session that actually went two minutes longer than we said it would due to technical difficulties, so. Um our fifteen-minute session was seventeen minutes, but two minutes of that is technical problems.
Started two minutes later.
Started two minutes later, yeah, thank you, um should have just said that in the first place. Anyway, um ha- we had a nice discussion, though we made no decisions, um and that brings us to item nine, uh well, that was item nine, what we need now is a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Jennifer, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by David, all those who wish to adjourn, say aye.
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 Okay, we're adjourned and it is seven oh nine P M, thanks, everyone.
Take care, Doug.
Good luck, thank you.